All right, being delayed by the town council, I'd like to move, move ahead now. Call the meeting to order. First thing. Pledge of allegiance, please. Stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, according to my list here, we're going to review and adopt the agenda. Any additions to it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add an item, please. This would be item six point A.
Okay, we didn't.
This would be a site plan review, case number twenty-five zero-two dash site S-I-T-E dash zero-zero-one-one-zero. And this is seven-seven-seven-four NC Highway sixty-eight.
What was that address again? I'm sorry. What was the address again? Seventy-seven seventy-four North Carolina Highway sixty-eight. Any second? I guess we need to second that. Will somebody on the planning board second that?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Gentry seconds it. Any other additions? So we good. We adopt the agenda. Let's take a vote. Mr. Gentry.
Aye.
Southern?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mrs.?
May, aye.
All right, and I also aye. We're good. Review and adopt the minutes of the July twenty-four regular town planning board meeting. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we pass them as they rea- as they stand.
Second?
I second.
All right, let's vote again. Mr. Je- Mr. Gentry?
Aye.
Mr. Southern?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Ms. Naylor?
Aye.
And I also vote aye unanimously. Public comment period. Anybody want to talk about anything right now? We'll have another public comment period at the end of the meeting. Nobody saying anything. New business, preliminary plat review case number two-five dash zero-two dash S-U-B dash zero-zero-four-two-seven. Would you like to introduce yourself and present this case to us?
Hello, my name is Darby Cheryl. I'm representing Guilford County Planning Department tonight instead of Avery too. Right there, yep. And tonight I'll be presenting cases for the planning department. So the first one, staff report preliminary plat review, case number two-five dash zero-two dash S-U-B dash zero-zero-four-two-seven, which is seven-eight-four-eight U.S. Highway one-fifty-eight. This subject, the subject property is located at seventy-eight forty-eight U.S. Highway one-fifty-eight Guilford County Tax Parcel, number six-four-zero-six-six in Oak Ridge Township, approximately four thousand feet east of the intersection of U.S. Highway one-fifty-eight and NC Highway sixty-eight, and compromises approximately one-hundred-point-two-five acres. The subject property is zoned CZ RS thirty, conditional zoning residential with the following conditions. Use conditions, all uses for the RS thirty zoning district as allowed by ta- table four dash three dash one, and Stokesdale zoning ordinance, except junked motor vehicles shall not be permitted. The development conditions are maximum number of lots is eighty-five. This is a request for approval of a preliminary plat proposing an eighty-lot subdivision to be connected to public water and private septic sys- systems. For staff comments, this project was reviewed at the Guilford County Technical Review Committees' March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. The site plan has also been reviewed individually by Guilford County staff. All staff comments received thus far are attached in the agenda packet. Staff recommendation is approval.
I have a question. I assume this is being developed in two phases?
Would we want the?
Well, there's a blue shading there.
Yep. Yes, that's correct, two phases.
Okay, so when they s- when the second phase is completed, will there be actually two accesses of this? According to this, it looks like only an easement. Our ordinance requires two entrances or two accesses. I'm assuming it's the two true roads, not just an access easement when they go more than fifty lots, fifty, whatever it is.
Recognize Mr. Fleming?
Yep.
Okay. Can you answer the question?
Sure.
If you would state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Craig Fleming. My address is forty-one ninety-six Mendenhall Oaks Parkway in High Point. So here tonight, representing the ownership group, Tommy Johnson's always alre- also here. To answer your question, there are two, there, there is one singular permanent road access. The secondary access is via a, an emergency services access through that access easement. That'll be provided in the form of a gravel road and a, I think there's a gate there and a Knox box to allow emergency services to access the property. So we've gone through the motions with the planning department and also the Stokesdale fire folks. And that's what they requested as a secondary access.
Does this meet our ordinance?
I had, it's the, did recently pass a state, a law that requires at least, you know, before a community can provide more than one hundred, more than one entrance way. It has to have at least, the threshold is one hundred, one hundred lots.
That's the state.
That was a state statute.
Stokesdale has an ordinance. All right, I'm asking a question. Somebody answer it.
Well, I mean, I think the statute, as I understand it, I haven't looked at it today, my recollection was that it preempted local restrictions that would require multiple entrances if the subdivision was less than a hundred lots. So, so the state statute essentially preempts the, the town's ordinance on that point. But it appears to me that at least some of these, I mean, my understanding, Mr. Fleming, is these are going to be shown on the recorded plats when the plats get recorded.
Yes, sir.
That's right. So, so they'll be, they'll be legally enforceable for anybody in the subdivision. And there won't be any way to block those entrances. I guess if they have a gate, then they will have some access to it. But no property owners will be able to block it. That would be a zoning violation if they did block it, the one that's there.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you just said. Does it mean that this particular entrance, when the last phase is completed, this actual, this entrance or ac- all traffic will be funneled through this single entrance? Because this, I heard somewhere there'll be a gate with a Knox box on it?
For an emergency, is it, are we talking about the same, make sure we're talking about the same plan? I'm the, Mason, can we go up to the, bring the plan up here? Is this what we're talking about? This is the one he's talking about? Yeah, primarily the public, there is one public road access, one public right-of-way access. The secondary access and, and we, we believe, we agree with the attorney's assessment that we believe the state law preempts the ordinance. The concern, we wanted to be aware of the concern that emergency services folks have. In the past, the primary driver behind this fifty-lot limitation has been emergency services concerns. And state law preempts the ordinance. However, we wanted to be sensitive to the emergency services concerns. And that was the, the reason, the discussion, the reason for the temporary access easement. Or, or the fire easement, I guess, is to put it, emergency services access easement.
Okay. Mr. Winfrey, I would like a definitive answer. Does the state law preempt local ordinance?
Yeah, I'm pulling that up.
As I remember, the ordinance requires two entrances, not easements.
That's right.
Looking for the statute now. There was, there was a you a moment to look at that.
That's right. As I remember, being on the planning board around that time is, we're concerned about how much traffic is being funneled through a single entrance. And that's why the town created that ordinance?
Maybe while he's checking on that, I will add that regarding transportation, traffic concerns, there is, DOT has recommended, required a widening in a turn lane at the entrance here. So there will be widening turn lane.
All right, we're waiting for Mr. Winfrey to.
Or if you want to move on to something else, I can come back to this.
I'm sorry?
If you, if you have other things to discuss.
Yeah, we, that's why I say we're, move on. Does the planning board have any other questions or comments?
I got a question. You, when you was reading it, you said the, it was going to have eighty-five lots on it. We're showing eighty on our book.
No, no, the, eh, the conditional zoning said they could have up to eighty-five lots, but they are presenting eighty. Yeah, I apologize.
Okay, that's, I misunderstood that.
I've got a question for Mr. Fleming. In our previous conversation on this regard, we noticed certainly there's a pond there. And there was some decision to be made whether that pond was going to be common area or part of the, the lots. It looks like it has, that has been determined. And there was some concern about the maintenance of the dam that might be there. Is there a determination made on that?
So that pond area is within common area. We designated that common area. Currently, that pond is not holding water. It's actually, there's no water in the pond. Our, our opinion at this point is that we will not reconstruct that dam.
Okay. And that will be, I think, I read in the notes that that area as common area will be the responsibility of the association for maintenance and upkeep?
That's correct. All common area will be deeded to a homeowner's.
Perfect.
So what will you do with the dam that's existing if it's leaking? Are you going to pierce it so it drains?
Well, it doesn't hold any water now. So it's, it's actually, you know, water doesn't exist in the pond at all. So what will we do with the dam? You know, it's, we'll probably try to make it, make sure it's safe. We don't see any threat of some kind of collapse or failure because there's no water behind it. So it's mainly just a cleanup operation really at this point.
Will it become a swamp behind it?
It doesn't appear to be. In its current condition, it's pretty much channelized now.
There's a nice little stream running right down the middle. It's all grassed in.
Okay, good. I'd hate to be one of the homeowners if it was a swamp behind it.
Yeah.
Them mosquitoes just kill me.
I don't know if it is.
One other quick question. I didn't see any indication of any off-site septic fields or anything. You anticipate that all of those lots are going to perk, okay?
No, there definitely will be some off-site septic fields in the common area. We've been working with the health department for, I don't know, three or four months now on citing septic areas for all the lots. It's not been finalized, but we believe there will be maybe eight or ten off-site areas on the east side of the pond within the common area. And then there may be some others. As we wrap up the evaluation for phase two, there may be some others also.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the planning board?
I apologize, this, the bill that passed a hundred and thirty-two pages, so I'm I'm trying to find the, the, part, portion dealing with preemption, so.
Well, while we are waiting, any other comments from the planning board? No where? Anybody wish to talk about this? From public, even though we didn't have any comments? Okay. We'll just wait a little bit on this. Mr. Winfrey, should we just go on to the next?
Yeah, well, if you, if you want to put this in a balance and then, and then come back to it, uh, to the next one would be fine.
All right, let's do that. Site plan review, case number twenty-three dash zero-two dash site, S-I-T-E dash zero-zero-zero-two-two. Address is seventy-five sixty-three North Carolina Highway sixty-eight. Darby, will you present this?
Yes, sir. The subject property is located at seventy-five sixty-three NC Highway sixty-eight Guilford County Tax Parcel, number one-six-three-seven-zero-zero in Oak Ridge Town, approximately two thousand feet south of the intersection of NC Highway sixty-eight and Hall River Road, and compromises approximately four-point-seven-three acres. The subject property is zoned HB Highway Business. This is a request for approval of a site plan proposing a warehouse self-storage development consisting of approximately seventy-seven thousand nine hundred square feet of storage space across four buildings. For staff comments, this project was reviewed at the Guilford County Technical Review Committees' November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four meetings. The site plan has also been reviewed individually by Guilford County staff. All staff comments received thus far are attached in the agenda packet. The recommendation from staff is approval.
All right. Any questions from the planning board? Darby, I would like to clarify, this development and site plan will be within the existing scenic corridor? Or not?
Yeah, it, it is in the Highway sixty-eight cor- scenic corridor. That is correct.
So it is in the scenic corridor and will comply with scenic corridor recommenda- or requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Well, since this is just a little town, anybody have any comments about this from the public? As this is a site plan review, I believe our planning board has ultimate approval on it. So our chair will entertain a motion as approval or not approval.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we do approve the site plan, case number twenty-three zero-two S-I-T-E dash zero-zero-zero-two-two, seventy-five sixty-three North Carolina Highway sixty-eight. This project has been reviewed and has been recommended by staff. And I move that we make that recommendation and approve it as well.
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Southern seconds it. Let's take a vote. Let's go from the other side. Ms. Naylor?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Southern?
Aye.
And Mr. Gentry?
Aye.
I vote nay.
Okay, let's continue. The next.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, if you'd like to, I can report back. So I did find
Yes.
in Senate Bill three-eighty-two, which was passed in November of last year. It was vetoed, and then the veto was rewritten on December eleventh of last year. It did provide that any, the local government could require multiple entrances for subdivisions of, of under a hundred residential lots. So, and that does preempt, therefore preempts our ordinance that provides otherwise. So, so the answer to the question is, there is state preemption on that point.
Okay. Let's go back to that particular plat review.
They're good, they're going back to, they're going to consider it now. Yes, that's right. It's effective, yes.
Okay. As a review, where we've got a definitive answer that the state law preempts local law, which our ordinance says, has to have two entrances for fifty-lot subdivision. Any other questions or any, or comments from the board? I got a question. Who's Norman?
The, the, the lady that owns this, that owned this property, it was, it was her inheritance and her father's name was Norman.
Norman Cook, a longtime resident of Stokesdale.
Yep, good to know.
I would like to make one clarification before you all make a decision. I referenced that emergency road as temporary. It is not temporary. I wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. I misspoke. It's not temporary. It is a permanent emergency access easement.
But because you've got a, will have something across it, it just can't be used willy-nilly then?
That's correct. We're trying to discourage, you know, everyday traffic there.
Will there be, will there be anything, any type of barrier established with the adjoining lots to prevent someone from taking something from their backyard and putting it across the road within the gates?
There, there's an easement on the plat, and of course, every property owner will have a copy of the plat. And that, there is notice there that, you know, you can't build anything or put anything in that easement.
I guess that'd be an HOA issue too.
Yeah.
It's good that you have the gates at both ends. I just want to make sure that people who live there didn't have access to just put whatever they want across that with, from within the gates. But you said it's going to be gravel?
Yes, it'll be gravel, sir.
So when DOT asks for turning lanes, does that mean a turning lane both are a de-acceleration lane on the westbound side and then a turning lane on the eastbound side, right?
That's correct.
Okay. How long is it going to be stacking-wise? I'm thinking of how much stacking will you have?
DOT has very specific. D O T has very specific criteria on the length of the bays, the length of the tapers, and it's based on the speed limit of the road. I don't recall those dimensions exactly, but it's, there's design criteria for it, and we'll comply with those.
Any other questions? Anybody? Anybody who's left here? Want to talk about it? All right, let's take a vote. Well, first of all.
Have a motion.
Let's have a motion, sorry about that. I'm too anxious. And remember, you have to put in your motion of reasoning why.
Well, this is a site plan review, so, so it's sufficient to say that it appears to comply with the
Okay.
development ordinance. As preempted by state law.
I like
Now we can say that.
I like keeping Mr. Winfrey happy about this. So, chair is waiting for somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve this preliminary plat review case twenty-five dash zero two dash sub dash zero zero four two zero zero four two seven at seventy-eight forty-eight U S Highway one fifty-eight, based on staff recommendations and the fact that it's in keeping with, uh, town ordinance in the light of the state's preemption regarding access.
Thank you, that's a good.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Stevens, second's it. Uh, Mr. Gentry made the motion, Mr. Stevens seconds it, let's take a vote. Ms. Mailer.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Southern.
Aye.
Mr. Gentry.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The addition of site plan review case twenty-five dash zero two S I T E dash zero zero one one zero. Duke Power. Darby, would you talk us through this?
Yes, sir. Uh, the subject property is located at seven 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 four N C Highway sixty-eight Guilford County Tax Partial Number two two eight three six nine in Oak Ridge Township, approximately four thousand eight hundred feet southwest of the intersection of N C Highway sixty-eight and U S Highway one fifty-eight, and compromises approximately twenty-three point four six acres. The subject property is Zoned A G Agricultural. This site, this is a request for approval of a site plan proposing utility substation. Staff comments, the, this project received a cursory review at Guilford County Technical Review Committees February fourth twenty twenty-five meeting, and was formally reviewed at the March fourth twenty twenty-five meeting. This site plan has also been reviewed individually by Guilford County staff. All staff comments received thus far are attached, um, and the recommendation is approval.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is there anybody from the power company is representing this? No, they don't care.
They're the power company.
Yeah, they've got the power. I have a question. This is a utility substation, which looks like it's got, uh, power lines to the back of it crossing the stream. Does anybody know what is going to be the transmission voltage, and what kind of power lines are we talking about? Are they gonna have? What you call it, the big old power lines across that?
High tension?
Keep Godzilla out? Or are we talking poles?
Yeah, I did, they didn't provide us that information, as far as I'm aware.
Why?
Yeah.
Well, it is a substation.
And what other lines are going in and out of the substation?
Again, I, we wouldn't know that, Duke Energy would, would be the best, um.
I mean, there's a utility easement on sixty-eight, are they gonna throw more power lines across on sixty-eight? I happen to know they are.
Yeah.
They've already contacted me about putting more lines up.
I guess some of that falls in the utilities commission, they're the ones that be reviewing those details.
They do have to go through utilities commission, but as far as site plan, the town.
Okay, since this is also in the scenic corridor, anything they do within the scenic corridor has to meet its requirements. Are they aware of that?
Certainly are, certainly that was.
Yeah, it should, it should have been gone over during process, yeah.
I was looking at their access road. I don't see any kind of gate or except, only, there's only a gate at their enclosure. Is that going to be true?
Yeah, that's a prior on the site plan, so, uh, I don't think your ordinance requires a gate. Of course, everything I would comment is because they went through a little review by the staff, overall staff, and they, you do comment, they review the plans for com- for compliance with your ordinance. If they judicially, you would not be able to recommend against it if it's not covered under the ordinance.
In my experience with substations, especially fairly large ones, um, this is going to be pretty close to some residential or residences. How noisy is this thing gonna be? I guess they've got proposed denuded limits of disturbance, so they're not going to do any more deforestation. I sure hope that's good enough for those people. Best where they're this is sixty-eight coming up right here. Okay. Don't start furnishing everybody magnifying glasses, we're gonna keep reading this stuff. Looks like they're gonna have a heck of a mound of gravel there. Hell, well.
It ha- it has a proposed access driveway.
Is this something that, look, you know, the adjoining neighbors were sent any information about? Okay. No, okay.
Well. Any questions from the board, so anybody?
Just a, I guess a, sort of a I don't wanna sound too official here, but
This will be the final approval on it too.
Yes, it is, that's, thank you, that was kind of my question. All right.
Again, unfortunately, the scope of your review is, does this comply with the ordinance or not? And, um, it might not be what you want to put there, or what you think would be there, you may not want to live next to it, but the, I guess the question is, is for you tonight is, does it comply with the ordinance? And, um.
And this agricultural
Allow for it?
What's it? Sorry.
Agricultural zoning, because this is, this land is Zoned Ag.
Yeah, does that allow for?
Yeah, I feel that they reviewed that.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would have been a part of the cursory as well as the, um, the, the main review for T R C, they would have reviewed that to make sure it, it meets all.
I'm a little surprised by that, I just wouldn't have expected something like this could be put under agricultural, well, I guess agricultural is pretty, pretty broad
But utilities
Scope, yeah.
They need to go where the customers are.
Right.
Some things like churches, they can go anywhere essentially, and so can, a lot of these things can go off anywhere.
Well, I kind of subscribe to trust but verify. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion that we either recommend approval or disapproval of this.
I'll make a motion that we approve it. Uh, this is, uh, that we approve case number two five dash zero two dash site dash zero zero one one zero at seventy-seven seventy-four N C Highway sixty-eight, based on staff recommendation and in keeping with city ordinances and other statutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Southern seconds it. Let's take a vote. Mr. Gentry.
Aye.
Mr. Southern.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Ms. Mailer.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Then it passes. Public comment period, am I getting, am I at the right spot, everybody? Nobody wants to say anything? Come on, I know you want to say something.
Come on, Joe.
Okay, Joe doesn't want to say anything, he's the only public here. Announcements, the next regular Stokesdale Town Council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-five at seven P M here at the Stokesdale Town Hall. The next regular Stokesdale Town Planning Board is scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-five at seven P M right here. Anything else?
Um, just briefly, Mr. Chairman, um, I wanted to inform the board too, I will, um, for the next, your next meeting, I'm afraid I will be out of the country in a script that I've had planned for some time, so I've discussed with Mr. Wagner that I, I'll be able to attend virtually, I just won't be able to be here in person.
Your cell phone bill's gonna be horrendous.
I hate for the town to have never has to go by your property taxes.
Cut that out.
So I wanted to inform the board that, you know, we're fine having a meeting, I just won't be here in person.
All right, thank you for the information. Entertain the motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Uh, Gentry seconds it, all opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Darby, for your first time over here. We're a little town, so we're kind of informal.